Good morning, everyone. This is our 10th Town Hall. Can you believe we're halfway through the semester and 10 Town Halls through the pandemic? We clearly see some bright lights ahead. Really glad to have this opportunity to share with you some important updates. We will have a lot of the regular folks that will be presenting updates around COVID-19 updates, changes in scheduling, and different activities around health, safety, enrollment, and a number of other things. I'm going to ask each speaker to introduce themselves, and I'm going to jump right into it because we've got so much content to cover. But really, I'm excited to be able to share with you a number of different updates and activities that are going on. I also want you to know if you haven't already submitted any questions that you want, please go ahead and feel free to do that at uwm-townhall@uwm.edu. Once again, uwm-townhall@uwm.edu. I'd like to start out by acknowledging and recognizing the challenges that face all of us and the resulting impacts on what we are experiencing, and also talk about what we're doing on our campus to address those. So that's really kind of a preview of what I'm going to share today. I think that there's no question that we've been through an extensive amount of challenges, and I want to share a clear-eyed, candid assessment of so much of the hardships that we faced, and then really recognize what we can do together about these areas. And I'm going to turn my time around to try to manage my own time a little bit. In that same spirit, I'm going to follow a script a little bit more than usual. I want to lay my thoughts out carefully and also be able to respond and talk to you about some of the specific actions and things that are in place. There is a lot coming at you, so you don't have to take notes because I'm going to share these comments in a campus follow-up that should be forthcoming, if not tomorrow, then Thursday. There are a number of things that have been happening, not just on our campus, but really, as well documented as many of you have shared with me from The Chronicle and other sources, oftentimes specific to your profession or other things, in terms of really the state of the world and what it means for us to be providing the incredible education, research, and engagement that we do on our campus. We know, for example, there's a lot of things that are just strictly pandemic-induced. So in that context, there's this prolonged uncertainty, fear, there's illness, and unfortunately, death that COVID has brought to many, many individuals across the world. There are a lot of changes in our work, and while some of those are advantageous and we've become accustomed to them, they're still challenging because they're different: the locations, the modality, the social bonds that are frayed today in so many ways because of some of the isolation. Again, it's that uncertainty and that change that's involved. On our home fronts, if you have kids in particular, or aging parents, or folks that you have to take care of, and even ourselves are significant to others, it's very, very difficult, particularly when we don't have those common ways of interacting. And then also the effects on those whom we serve. And it's very clear with our students being stressed, with our communities being stressed, that also takes a toll on us. There's no question about that. The second category of challenges are what I call the shoals of higher education, and we have seen those before the pandemic, but the pandemic really exacerbated those areas: the types of funding and the cuts, the challenges, the increased expenses, and ultimately, in a world of inflation that's projected to be 6%, 7%. You know, while we've gotten raises, it's wonderful to have that, it's not enough. So in effect, that depresses our salaries. We all know too well the impact on our campus budgets, but at the same time, we're seeing national and regional enrollment declines. We're seeing that across the UW system, and unfortunately, in too many places. There are also fewer colleagues and workers upon which this burden falls. We've seen as our enrollment has declined, our headcount has declined. And there's also the psychological challenges, the idea that, you know, without the boundaries that we used to have with remote work, it's just all too easy to have work blend into home and vice versa. So it's very, very difficult in the world of higher ed today. And finally, just the state of the world. I think you can all appreciate just the anxiety and the normal uncertainty. There's inflation, as I mentioned, there's Russian invasion of Ukraine and where that's going, and political divides across the country that have been in the way for a while. Clearly, attacks on higher education, oftentimes product and service shortages, depending on what area and field you're in. And then there's issues around the job mobility and talent retention. It's very hard because a lot of times people can find alternatives elsewhere. So I want to speak to these and some of the things that we're doing, but first I want to just clarify some of the effects of all that adversity. What does it mean? What's happened? And just try to explain and provide a context for what's happening at UWM and frankly, in a lot of organizations today, which I interact, and I'm sure you're aware of. In a word, it's about stress, and we know from when we have uncertainty over prolonged periods of time, that, you know, in the duration, that increases stress. And we have faculty, Nadia Fuad, James Dmitri, who've done some great work with our Dean of Students, Adam Jessel, and others, and they've actually studied trauma at UWM, and they were able to report the results of over 600 individuals who had responded to a survey that showed some pretty significant effects here at UWM. And I'm going to include that research and also some of the key findings in a summary that you'll see in my campus message that'll go out. But it's very revealing, and it just underscores, we're not immune from these pressures. And I want to point out that there's a number of things that James and Adam and others have done on our campus through a series of trauma-informed care workshops. In fact, they've had over 55 workshops that over 600 people have attended so far. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But it's understandable how morale and burnout can be affected, and it's all too common. And I call this ultimately something that results in the great disengagement. It's real hard to stay highly engaged. And of course, we might think that with the light at the end of the tunnel and the weather warming and everything that's in front of us, everything will go back to normal and stabilize when we get to the other side of things in terms of the pandemic. But I think that's unlikely, and I don't think we're going to go back to that normal state. So we have to take control. We have to have the self-sufficiency, and that's really what I want to speak to. So I'm going to be as forthcoming as I can and tell you, first of all, that I really understand and I feel the burden that you're experiencing. There's no question about that. I want to thank you for your persistence, your commitment, your incredible dedication and work during the pandemic. We couldn't have gotten through this without you. Because of you, at a foundation level, we have done our part in contributing to the healthcare and the safety, not just of our campus, but in a large part to our community. We have done a lot of work around testing, put in place an incredible number of vaccines, deployed a lot of PPE, provided safe working conditions, and we've also been recognized because of this work as a community healthcare champion. We're the only non-healthcare organization in the southeastern Wisconsin area that's received any recognition at that high a level. It's pretty gratifying because of your work. But we've also done what is central to our core, and that is the transformation of individuals through education. We've taken individuals from either high school, student status, or transfer students, and we've turned them into college graduates. And what that does is it opens doors and it changes lives in ways that nothing, nothing, well, maybe massive parental income, otherwise, nothing else can really change the course of somebody's trajectory. So I submit that the work that you're doing has never been more important, and it's far more important than when you began at UWM or any other higher ed institution. Why do I say that? One core reason. I have oftentimes said that if we talk about democracy, we talk about civilization and education and those together, there's a race, and there's a race between what's going on in terms of civilization and our democracy in particular, and it's this race between barbarism and anarchy versus education. And if we don't prevail, if higher ed doesn't prevail, there's a lot that's going to be lost. I can tell you that. So that's why I believe the work that you're doing is vital to our society. It's you and your positioning that can address this better than any other organization, in particular, UWM, which I'll speak to in a moment. There's societal effects that I've just talked about, and we can hang our hat on that. But I think we also have to look at the individual and the impact of our education, our work, on individuals, their families, and ultimately, our communities, the prosperity. And I'm convinced, and you've probably heard me say this before, what we provide is that foundational pillar of education that allows individuals to have mobility, particularly through employment. So those twin pillars of education and employment, nothing is more important in this region, frankly, in this country, in my opinion. We take and we give from this region, 5,000-plus students every year. That's how many go into the workforce from UWM with bachelor's, associate's, master's, doctoral degrees every year, and it's the most diverse student body. There's nothing like it in the state of Wisconsin. There's simply no single organization is more important than UWM for helping transform individual and regional trajectories. Because of your work, our alumni have greater employment opportunities, homeownership, income levels, health outcomes, engagements in civic activities, and a lot of other quality of life and quality of region outcomes. And your research changes the world quite literally through advances in healthcare, engineering, behavioral intervention, the arts, environmental work, business, chemistry, and so many other areas. Because of you, despite all those challenges, we've achieved for the third time R1 status, the hollowed R1 status, of which there's less than 150 universities in this country. You should be incredibly proud. You may not have heard, last week, we were able to unembargo the news. We've also achieved top 10. In fact, we're fifth in the country in terms of military-friendly status. We've jumped two moves from silver all the way to gold and top five within that. So congratulations to all those who've worked on that in MABRIC, VACC, Student Affairs, and otherwise. So in that context, talking about the challenges and the effects of those challenges, I'd like to speak really quickly to how we have been taking action to support you and our commitment. So there's really three categories of these different things. One is action we've taken, two is actions that we're in the process of implementing, and third are some things that you can do, and I'd ask you to do as I go through these. There's 18 of them, so I'm going to try to blast through pretty quick, but keep in mind there's going to be a campus message that's going to be able to share with you, that I will share with you with these areas. The first is about flexibility in your schedules. And what some of you have experienced, and what I'd like each of you to be able to engage in, is when and where you work wherever possible. So while not all jobs have complete flexibility, I'd like you to engage with your supervisor, if your supervisor hasn't engaged with you, to find out what's the ideal circumstance that will work the best for you. At UWM, we really want to maximize the flexibility to find the best ways to work going forward in the future. At the same time, I want to recognize that we are an organization that's heavily dependent on physical locations and in-person presence. With that in mind, I want to directly recognize the residential employees, individuals who have been here day in, day out through the pandemic, on our campuses, all of them, and have done heroic things. These are our folks in housing and dining, other direct student-facing areas, there's many, our facilities, transportation employees, our police, healthcare workers, many faculty and instructors who are in the classroom, providing that face-to-face interaction. UWM wouldn't have made it without you. Secondly, I want to encourage you, wherever possible, to take that time off, paid leave for our staff, faculty, if you're not teaching in the summer or other breaks, take that time off. Third, how many of you feel meetinged to death? Let's stand back and take a look at when and where and how often we have these meetings. Critically evaluate your schedules. Ask, do we really need to have that meeting? Can we do this in another format where we can just send a memo and meet less often? That really can relieve a lot of stress and the burden. Fourth, how meaningful is your work? I'd like all supervisors to engage with you, and you, if you're a supervisor, trying to find that striving for compassionate leadership. Work with employees to determine how your jobs can be more participative and make sure that you've got a clear role in defining the future of your area. This is beyond governance. This is aimed at really all of our employees in terms of having a fuller role in how the work is done. Fifth area is communication, and I'll state upfront, we need to up our game. We have to do more to make sure that not just do we communicate what's going on, but provide forums for two-way exchanges. Stan Yacitis, the Chair of the University Staff Senate, and I have talked about this issue, and I want to reinforce what Stan always advises. We simply have to do more, make people feel more engaged and more part of things. Number six, titling. We didn't ask for TTC, that's the Title and Total Compensation Program throughout the UW system, and it's been driven at a pace that is scale and pace that's been challenging. There's no question about it. I do think in the long run, TTC is going to have many advantages: greater comparability, not only across job titles, but particularly for wages with external markets. Nothing wrong with that. Much clearer job and career ladders. Those are all good things, but the challenge is it's disruptive change, and it's been something that I want to tell you. I've got a lot of support for the appeals process, and that will be done in a great manner, and I'm very, very confident of our HR colleagues who will help tremendously with that. In a related way, our aligning and engaging workplace, they've been working on implementing, making sure that we have good processes for the teaching professor and research professor titles. I support these activities and really want to make sure we uphold these throughout the implementation. Number seven, shared governance, just a quick comment. I have and will continue to uphold all tenants of shared governance as we continue going forward. That's a cornerstone. It's something that I grew up in and will continue to value. For example, how many campuses engaged with their faculty and staff around the issue of when should we lift the mask mandate? I think we were the only campus across the system that has had repeated meetings. Number eight, service. This is an important topic, and I want to acknowledge we have fewer employees with our enrollment reductions, and our budgets have declined. So there's fewer people available to do the same amount of work. But shared governance, as I just mentioned, remains constant and a priority for us all. It's how we do our work. So our 2030 implementation aligning and engaging the workforce team has been reviewing faculty workload issues and will offer recommendations on the appropriate recognition at the school, college unit level later this spring. I want to underscore two points. First, service is needed and is valued, and we should make sure that that's a message that's consistent. It is really the cornerstone of how we operate. I appreciate, for example, how the history department has reevaluated their service and other workload issues and put that in, I think, an appropriate place. Second, as the university committee has shown over the last several years, we can also streamline some of our governance work as our campus has evolved, and it'll continue to evolve. So to my earlier comments about too many meetings, think about, do we really need this function? And that can help reduce the burden. Number nine, employee engagement. Development and engagement are being examined for all of our employees with implications for workload, recognition, and array of activities. We'll have more recommendations on this later this year. Number 10, our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. They have been more meaningful, measured, and pervasive than ever. That work is never going to be done, but we are having great, great progress, and the meaning behind DEI could never be more important. It's important for our current and future climate for UWM. The region of choice commitment that we have made, it will change our workplace and our progress in hiring and other areas is being made. So there's a number of other areas, and I'm going to try to shorten a lot of these just to get through them. They'll include how we are creating a positive workplace, number 11, number 12, building on our pillars to increase faculty lines as our budget improves, number 13, the number of different investments that we're making. One-time funds, we have some capability to do that. We're going to be making investments in advising and student success, seed funding for a number of online programs, and many other areas we'll read about. I do want to underscore number 14. It's an investment we're making in you, and this is perhaps one of the more important announcements in this Town Hall, where I want to stress the value of our employees and recognize that by the end of this semester, we will be implementing a one-time 2% of salary lump sum payout for our most permanent employees. There will be a floor or a minimum salary increment of $1,000 for our full-time employees so that those who are at lower incomes will also experience a higher percentage distribution. Those payments will be prorated based on full-time equivalent status. Our graduate assistants will receive a flat-dollar amount. A link to all the details will be shared in my chancellor message. It will be coming out, as I said, tomorrow or the next day. I will forego this one-time salary increment for the betterment of the campus budget. Number 15, EAP. I could talk about that at length, Employee Assistance Program. Number 16, creating a sense of belonging, the ways that I think are manifest through a number of different activities. I've asked cabinet members, and I ask you, to think about different types of social activities, a number of things from softball events, lunches, dinners, celebrations internally of accomplishments of colleagues. Number 17, I mentioned already in terms of the supportive environment with the workshops on trauma-informed care, the value of that. And finally, I ask with the greatest simplicity, greatest humility, to please offer care, respect, and kindness to one another. One never really knows what's going on under the surface with other people, and so despite the conflicts that rage abroad and domestically, UWM has been and can be even more our haven of peace, belonging, moderation, and joy. I want to end by telling you why I'm bullish for our future. There's really four reasons. Number one, our mission. It's the right focus for the right time. All the things that we do are on access and research, engaging in meaningful ways. It's really long overdue to have such recognition for the types of things that we're doing today. Number two, funding opportunities that are receiving a lot of support from region and system levels. We haven't locked in additional funding yet, but there's a lot of reasons to believe we will have additional funds that we have not had, so I'm optimistic about that. Number three, fresh leadership with a high commitment to building UW System branding, enrollment, educational technology infrastructures, and engagement with our local communities. That's something that is, I think, highly valuable. But most important, and most significantly in many ways, I'm bullish because of you. It's your talent, it's your experience, it's your dedication, and the hard work that has enabled and will continue to enable us to overcome all types of adversity. So thank you for your service, and thank you for allowing me to share these comments and perspectives with you. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Robin Van Harpen, our Senior Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administrative Affairs, and she's going to talk about some of the budgetary updates. Robin, please.
Thank you, Chancellor Moni. Good morning, colleagues. As Chancellor Moni said, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about our budget and finance. As we head into the end of this fiscal year, we're continuing to be in a little bit of an unusual situation in that we are feeling significant budgetary strain as we have for some time, and yet we've also seen our campus balances grow. The growth in balances has been largely due to federal funding coming in after expenses were reduced to mitigate our pandemic losses, both last fiscal year and this fiscal year. The two biggest factors impacting our challenged budget over the last decade have been enrollment and a tuition freeze that is extended now for nine years. The combination of those two factors, both the enrollment challenges and tuition freeze, has impacted our tuition revenue significantly, which is our largest source of funding. It's fallen eight out of the last nine years, on average, about 3% per year. State tax appropriations, our second-largest source of revenue, was falling until about 2017, when then it started to increase very modestly, but at that time mainly due to state funds being provided to pay for 70% of our state pay plans for employees. So while that funding was helpful, it didn't alleviate the decline in our enrollment and tuition revenues, and in fact, it created some further strain because we had to fund 30% of each pay plan out of other campus funds, which basically means reducing expenses elsewhere. As we look to fiscal year 2023, that's next year, as a campus, we've allocated out a modest 1.5% cut on average to schools, colleges, and divisions, which is much better than where we started our planning at the beginning of this year. This better result is partly due to us using some of our cash reserves to help with what would have been a larger cut. We've been waiting throughout this year to hear whether the nine-year tuition freeze might finally end next year, and we now know unfortunately that it will continue for a 10th year. However, recognizing the hardship associated with the tuition freeze, Governor Evers has allocated out $30 million in cash to UW System, and we expect to receive a portion of that in one-time funds, which we will then use to fund the employee one-time payment that will occur towards the end of this semester. We truly hope that next year will be the last year of the tuition freeze, as it has had an enormous impact on our budgets over the last decade. Because we have larger-than-usual one-time balances, but our permanent budgets remain strained, we have made plans to invest in a number of one-time strategic initiatives this year and next, with the objective to increase enrollment and revenue growth in the future, as Chancellor Moni described. Again, though, we are limited in our ability to use cash to address ongoing needs such as faculty and staff lines. We had a couple of questions come in about wages not increasing with market and inflation, and when can employees expect reasonable wage increases either under TTC or relative to market? As campus leadership, we will continue to advocate for pay plan increases for employees, including at a higher rate than the 2% that we've been seeing recently, especially given recent inflation. In the meantime, our units are in a very difficult position trying to hire and retain our necessary employees who are rightly demanding higher salaries, but they really don't have a way to do that other than by cutting positions. That's a very tough choice because reduced staff can also be as negative as wages not keeping pace with inflation. So the best that we can do right now across campus is that one-time lump sum payment that Chancellor Moni announced. On a related topic, we also received a question about when will academic staff pay progression be established and implemented? This was originally conceived of as a potential replacement for the loss of prefixes for some academic staff titles with the conversion to TTC titles. Human Resources has committed to academic staff governance that it will develop and implement a process in consultation with both Academic Staff Committee and the University Staff Committee, with a goal implementation date of January 1st of 2023. While we've been calling this pay progression, for lack of a better term, it really is a process that would require all units with assistance from HR to review and consider academic staff and university staff salaries within their salary ranges on a regular basis, such as annually. Units would still need to make compensation decisions that are aligned with their own budgets. Thus, while we can arrange to have a process established for that review, and we intend to do that, a lot is dependent on actually having growing revenues to make changes to salaries. All of this discussion points to how vitally important our enrollment and student success are to everything that we're trying to accomplish. When we can stabilize and grow our enrollment, we will stabilize and grow our revenues, which then allows us to stabilize and grow our investment in our faculty and staff. And that is my cue to pass this over now to our next group of speakers, who will address a number of topics, including our fall enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Good morning, everybody. I'll be honest with you, it's the provost here on campus, Mark. I just want to wish you and Sarah a good break in the spring break, and that you really have time off. It was not an easy time to manage during the pandemic and the future, and also with your health challenges that you had to work through. I just want to wish on behalf of the campus a really good, solid break. No emails, no texting, just a good, solid break, no internet. So colleagues, I just want to update you briefly on two topics. The one is the R1 planning, and the other one deals with the enrollment planning on campus, and I will ask Kay then to say a few words on our enrollment planning. On the R1, you know, this is the third time that we have received the R1. It was great news. We all waited in anticipation, some a little bit more pessimistic, some were more optimistic. We got it. We were very grateful, very happy. We are 137 out of 147, and every year, every time that we got it, it was like from 10 from the bottom, 110 out of 147. 110 out of 121, 21 out of 131. So we're there and we hang in. And they don't give us a lot of time to plan and to really enjoy it because the next round that the Carnegie Classification will use a data set is next fall. That's not far away. And one of the variables that we can really manage on campus is the number of doctoral students that graduate on our campus. That really did bring us the R1 in many ways. Doesn't mean it minimizes the others, but really that counts for us. It's the number of doctoral students. So I asked Jason Puskar from the Graduate School to really look with a team on tactical things that we can do to align the number of doctoral students that graduate in the fall semester, but also look more strategically long-term to ensure that whatever we can do to retain our R1 status. And one thing that we will do is also financially to incentivize where possible, students that can graduate next year. On the enrollment front, it is one of the most important variables on this campus. There's not a week, or sometimes a day, that I do not discuss with my team and with the chancellor and with others enrollments. It's our budget. That is the unfortunate situation that we're in. It is so important and critical. We have done, I think, under circumstances remarkable well during the pandemic to bring back our students, to retain our students. We did not know how many students was going to enroll in the pandemic. When we flipped fully online, all these uncertainties, there was no playbook, no predictable analytics. But I just want to thank Dave, Kay, you and your team, but more so the advisors, all our support staff, the faculty, the instructor, every single person on this campus, Mark, to what you've said, who reached out, who support, who walked the extra mile, who helped our students that did not go unnoticed. And without that, we would not have been successful. Our numbers do look good, the new incoming numbers. But it will take a longer time, of course, to increase enrollments because, you know, we have declined, so the overall size of the campus is smaller. But it really looks good. I am very happy about our graduate numbers. That's really, really good and positive. So Kay, I'm going to ask you to talk a little bit about where are our numbers and what we can do on campus. Kay, over to you.
Thank you, Provost Britz, and good morning, everyone. As the Provost shared, our numbers are actually looking pretty strong across the board in terms of both application and admission. We're seeing that we are up undergrad, grad, domestic, and international in terms of our application and admits. So really, the key to our success for Fall '22 is actually enrolling these students. I know time is short, so I want to share three quick examples of the great work happening on campus that really depicts that feeling, that energy that the Provost shared. So campus partners, under the leadership of the undergraduate admissions teams in recent weeks, have been hosting a series of in-person admitted student days. These are our first since the start of the pandemic. We've already hosted nearly 750 admitted students plus their guests, so bringing us up to about 1,600 folks on campus. This is far higher than we've seen in recent years. And I can personally tell you, having been at the events, the energy is fantastic. And we have a couple more planned yet this spring. So if you find yourself over in the Union or around campus seeing big groups of students, please give them a warm hello and welcome. That is the energy that we're so excited to have back on campus. A couple of more technical things behind the scenes, but I think that are just as important. We have seen collaboration across campus to simplify the enrollment process so we can get out of students' way, so they can just get here, get admitted, and get all the way enrolled. So through that, we're engaging with students earlier. And then finally, campus partners have been very patient with us as we've been engaging with Slate, our new CRM. I know it's been challenging, but I'm really happy to tell you that with our new tool, we have a whole lot more power to be able to customize our outreach to the admitted students in ways that we've never done before. And this has been a true team effort to be able to make this happen. And I really think that these three examples, as well as many, many more that are happening, are going to help us to be successful for the fall. With that, I'm going to pass the virtual mic over to Dean Scott Gronert to talk a little bit about the Scenario Planning Work Group.
Thanks, Kay. So in response to the anticipated change in the mask mandate, the Scenario Planning Work Group was asked to review the practices and guidelines for the Spring '22 semester. And so the week of February 21, the Scenario Planning Work Group met and worked during that week. Then we held a all-chairs, associate deans, deans meeting on March the 3rd. What the recommendation was is that the guidelines and practices that we're using could work just as well through Spring '22. What that means for instructors is if there were any requests for change in modality, they continue using the Provost's policy on that. Though at this time of the semester, those processes will be handled mainly at the dean level rather than going through the full Provost's process. What that meant for our students is that we again ask for flexibility with students who can't attend for any reason. That flexibility extends to using lecture capture if useful and practical, being a little flexible on deadlines if you can. That doesn't extend, though, to asking instructors or faculty to run parallel online and in-person courses. So those changes will come as we move past spring break. All right, I think that's all I have. So I'm going to pass it over to Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, Kelly Haig.
Good morning, everybody. I think a theme that I'll expand on today is really the care that we've shown for one another throughout the pandemic. I'm going to briefly highlight some of the things that we've heard about via emails or other FAQs on our website. But first, our current policy around masks ends this Friday. And effective on March 19, UWM employees, students, and visitors are highly encouraged to wear face coverings indoors. Certain activities, including but not limited to the Children's Learning Center, the Norris Health Center, UWM Psychology Clinic, healthcare professional clinical training programs may continue to require face coverings. This will be based on CDC or other external guidance. Of course, also, individuals are required to wear face coverings on campus shuttle buses and in bus vehicles. It's important just to highlight that units or activities that are not subject to such external guidance may not require face coverings, but may highly encourage face coverings in shared space. We also have university-provided signage that people can post just to indicate and remind people about that. Our policy around testing remains the same with those unvaccinated employees and students who work or learn onsite required to undergo asymptomatic testing on a weekly basis. This will continue through May 20. Of course, those not up to date with vaccinations are strongly encouraged to undergo asymptomatic testing on a weekly basis. Because of our lower numbers, while the testing will remain in place, it will be somewhat reduced hours, but we think we'll have plenty to accommodate everybody who's interested. One of the questions that we received in this kind of is really underscores the inflection point that we're at within this is what happens now? Now that the masking mandate has gone away, will this impact? Specifically, the question was related to our grind locations. And as a fellow coffee lover, I really wanted to be able to speak to this question. If you've walked around the Union or other places on our campus, you'll see that there are some places that are closed, but it really has little to do with the actual masking requirements and really everything to do with labor shortages. This is unlikely to change through the rest of the semester, but we already have initiatives underway to address labor issues so that come fall, we'll be back to full strength. Just want to again underscore, these changes will mark a major shift for us. And like the chancellor said, we really have an opportunity here to continue our ongoing care for each other as we navigate what comes next. From here, I'll turn it over to Vice Chancellor for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Gia Vang.
Thank you, Kelly. Chancellor Moni and other colleagues have provided some very important updates and outlined various ways in which actions are being taken to respond to them. What I would do is share briefly how we have approached our diversity, equity, and inclusion work on this campus and the direction that we will continue to pursue. I want to acknowledge that there are so many external factors that impact our campus community. While it's important for us to be informed of these factors, we have tried to focus on what is within our control. This entails listening to colleagues who feel isolated, identifying problems, and creating meaningful efforts to allow everyone to be able to speak honestly with each other with compassion. We are aware that DEI and issues of belonging are very important and sometimes difficult conversations to have in workplace discussions. To create a culture of belonging, we have focused on the human side of the university by emphasizing community building, self-care, self-reflection, and healing. For us to choose to focus on the people, this helps to create a sense of community where people feel that they can be authentic, feel valued, and that they can be supportive. Actions that we are taking, especially in terms of trying to reduce isolation and create a sense of belonging, is very important at multiple levels. I want to emphasize that. I think it's very important, what we have done is that we think it's important for leaders to reach out to their staff, but it can also be equally impactful for employees to check in with each other because this solidifies the sense of community. And it also reinforces that they are part of a team and they're not alone. Many people have shared with us that they feel a sense of community when a colleague reaches out to them, especially asking them how they're doing professionally as well as personally. I want to end just by saying that it is often the small things that we do that can uplift our colleagues. Kindness and compassion do not cost a lot, but the return can be enormous. So thank you for everyone who has participated in all of the work that we've done. I will now turn it back to Chancellor Moni.
Vice Chancellor Vang, all speakers, thank you. Great content, really important updates. We're now going to move into the Q and A portion of our program, and I'll begin with a question for Robin. Robin, this is from an anonymous colleague who asks, "With most of my office switched to working from home 100%, will you subsidize employees that don't have a choice and are being told they must work from campus? Those employees now have to pay insanely high gas prices plus parking. That is not fair to those who are being forced back when work-from-home employees aren't saddled with those costs." Robin, please.
Thank you, Chancellor Moni. Unfortunately, we don't have a way at this time to subsidize employees for gas and parking. We do have a lot of employees who are coming into our campuses for work. Our hope is that the one-time payment will help alleviate some of these costs, provide some temporary relief. Transportation services, which includes parking, is a self-supporting operation, so they have to recover revenues in order to offer parking and transportation services on campus. But they are continuously monitoring rates and looking for creative ways to help employees mitigate those costs. They do offer an employee bus pass that can be combined with one of the three county-wide park-and-ride options. There's also the U-Park Shuttle Lot for employees. You can find a lot more information about alternatives on the Transportation Services website.
Thank you, Robin. The next question is for you and me. This is from Rachel Kathman. Chancellor cited 6% inflation and stated we've had raises. He also said the work you are doing has never been more important in our cultural moment of anarchy and barbarism versus democracy. Graduate TAs who are instructors of record teach foundational skills like critical thinking and information literacy. Why haven't graduate students received a raise in over five years to reflect the importance of this work? A couple of comments from me first. Number one, they are eligible and will be receiving some of the work in the one-time fund. Second, I do believe that they have received raises in the last five years. And I'd ask Robin and then Johannes to address that in terms of the increase. Third comment is related to this. Why do our employees not have greater raises? Why aren't we sharing more? We simply have had extreme budget cuts. We've been in a structural deficit for some time. In fact, our provost, who has been the senior provost across the system tied with one other person, can attest to, I think there's only been one year where he hasn't known anything but budget cuts. So there is a significant damper on that. Robin, please.
Thank you, Mark. Second, what you have, I don't have the information right at my fingertips. I believe we have attempted to address that at one point, I believe, within the last five years. It is a juggling act to try to cover all of the needs that we do have. I do believe there is a proposal that has been made to make future increases as well. And again, we are doing our best to manage our budgets. If we can increase revenues, that would provide more funding to address more base increases in the future.
It looks like we've heard from Jason Puskar. Thank you, Jason. The last TA raise was in 2018, 2019, which raised Masters to $13,750. So just an FYI on that. Let's move on to the next question, which is for Amir from Anonymous. "With all the data that has proven that regardless of vaccination status, people can get and transmit COVID, how is UWM justifying the requirement that only unvaccinated individuals continue to get tested? It is a very discriminatory policy. Testing should either be required for everyone or no one."
That's a very valid question. And there is no question that both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals can transmit as well as get infected with COVID-19. However, if you look at the numbers, and DHS has a website that lists the numbers of fully vaccinated versus unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated individuals. And the rate still continues to be higher in the unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated individuals. We have limited resources, so we have to focus on groups that have a higher chance of getting infected as well as then transmitting that infection. So because we have limited resources, we have to focus on the individuals and the groups that have a higher rate of transmissions and infection. In an ideal world, it would be the right thing to do to get everyone tested, but that's not possible right now because of our resources. So therefore, we continue to focus on some of the areas that have the highest yield.
Thank you, Dr. Sadek. The next question is for Robin from Jenny Hahnisch Schmitz from Trio. "We are aware that budgets have been cut for all schools and colleges. How is the budget adjusted for the College of General Studies branch campuses that have more operating costs compared to the other schools and colleges?"
So the College of General Studies is a little bit different than our other schools and colleges, but they participate in the annual budget building process in the same way as every other division at UWM. And we go through that process in the fall. We did last fall in preparation for next fiscal year. Although the formula that applies to other schools and colleges does not apply to CGS because it's not directly applicable without research activity there, we do look at strategic metrics for every school and college, including CGS, and make adjustments after talking with the college about what they're seeing in terms of enrollment and other trends for the future. And so we went through that process with participation from members of the APBC and ultimately made an assessment for what the budget allocation should be for CGS for next year.
Thank you, Robin. We're waiting for the next question. It's being typed in the chat right now. And this looks like it will be, unless other questions come in, the last question. So we're still waiting. Hang on there. It's a pretty rare thing to have quiet airtime during a town hall. If I didn't know this, I'd have taken twice as long. Just kidding. Must be a long question, and it looks like it's going to be for Robin. Okay, it's not too long. So the question is, will the one-time payment be attached to our regular paychecks or a single paycheck?
So great. This is a happy question. So again, the chancellor will provide a link to all of the details about that payment in his upcoming message. We are planning for the payment to be made in connection with the May 19 payroll. That is our goal. That really requires a number of things to happen in a very timely way in the next month, but that's what we're working for. And I believe that, I don't know the answer to whether it will just increase the standard paycheck or be separate. That is a good question. So we'll see if we can get an answer to that and have it added to the materials that are going to be posted. I see that there's a question about the tax impact and whether it would be taken out at a larger rate due to it being a lump sum versus the standard rate as is applied to payroll. So I'll see if I can get an answer to that, and we'll include that in the written materials.
Terrific. Thank you, Robin. And so it looks like no further questions have come in. So at this point, what I would suggest is that we call the town hall concluded. And I want to thank everybody again, not just for engaging today, but also for everything that you've done to enable us to get to this point and setting the foundation for even greater success. As you've heard with regard to our future, we've got great prospects. As you've heard with regard to our future, we've got great prospects for enrollment in the fall. We have to convert that to yield. So as Kay has described, the open, admitted, open enrollment and admitted student days are vitally important, and all of the things that you continue to do, and I just have to underscore the role of everybody in terms of helping shape the future of this campus in terms of student centricity, research support, and all the other things that we're doing regularly. So in that spirit, I want to thank you, thank all the speakers that we've had on our town hall today, and I continue to look forward and stay optimistic for a great future for UW Milwaukee. Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.